Thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. The time on the clock on the wall there is seven o'clock. We'll start this particular agenda off with a roll call. And my eyes are telling me that all board members are present. Next, I'm going to ask you to please stand, remove your hat if you would, and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America. (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible).
Just so I know, can you, can, can everybody hear me back there? Joe, can you hear me? It's kind of low. I'm not sure if this is, that doesn't turn it up. All right, I'll try and lean into this so everyone can hear. All right, looking for approval of the agenda.
Someone?
Second.
All right, any, any questions, comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, agenda is approved. Is there anyone here in the, in the audience who wishes to speak to the board on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, any students here for their 12th grade government class? I see a couple of hands raised. It's okay to acknowledge that you're here. What I'm going to ask you to do is, if you would, come on up to the podium. You can file up here and just tell us your first name, tell us the school, and then your teacher's name. You can give a shout out to your teacher. So, come on up, don't be shy. Just real quick, lean into the mic.
I'm Claire, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher's name is Starlene.
Hi, I'm Jamian, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is Mr. Starlene. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jasmine O'Neil, and I come from Jefferson, and my teacher's name is Mr. Starlene.
Hi, I'm Rachel, I come from Jefferson, and shout out to Mr. Starlene because I'm actually here. Yeah, and he's my teacher, so, yeah.
I'm Tierney, Mr. Starlene, and Jefferson.
I'm Carrie, I go to Jefferson, and Mr. Starlene.
All right, so Mr. Starlene scored big tonight. So, you'll have to tune into this on rerun and watch and listen to his name. All right, next up is the Kennedy High School National Merit Commended Student. Andy Beaton is going to come on up and introduce our student this evening.
Members of the Board, Superintendent Fujitaki, my name is Andy Beaton, Principal of Kennedy. Gives me pleasure to be here tonight and to introduce Grant Barland, who's a National Merit Commended Student from Kennedy. Grant's very involved in his school, certainly in academics, but also as a student leader. He's in Ignite Mentors, he's in National Honor Society. He is a dual-sport athlete, I think basketball and baseball. Has some thoughts about going to either Madison or the University of Minnesota next year, and I think studying mechanical engineering. So, gives me pleasure to have him recognized here publicly.
All right.
Well, I don't have many words, but I'd like to say thank you guys for recognizing this, and, yeah, thank you very much.
Imagine that, a humble National Merit Student. Next up, we have Friends of the School District. The school district is fortunate to have businesses and organizations supporting our learners and the community of Bloomington. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the school board recognizes our friends of education. Our friend being recognized this evening is Washburn Center for Children, and I'd like to invite Eric Melby, Executive Director of Student Services, to make tonight's introduction.
Thank you Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the Board. The Bloomington Public Schools have partnered with Washburn Center for Children for the past five years to provide mental health support to Bloomington students and families at Pond, Valley View Elementary, Oak Grove Elementary, Westwood, Washburn Elementary, and Valley View Middle. Those last two schools are just starting up their sites this year. Washburn Center for Children has been in existence in various forms for well over a hundred years. Their mission is to help children with social, emotional, and behavioral problems, and their families lead successful lives. Washburn Center for Children is a recognized expert in the state and childhood trauma, and they have developed a nationally recognized model for treating high-risk children, with the resulting research being used by therapists across the country. Bloomington students and families have reaped the benefits of this expertise because of our ongoing partnership with Washburn. Tom Holton, Community Ed Director, who couldn't be here tonight, wanted to be sure I noted that the now-five-year-old collaboration with Washburn Center for Children at Pond has been highly successful with many early childhood families and staff voicing great support for that service. Tom Steinmetz, standing next to me right now, is the Chief Operating Officer for Washburn Center for Children. He's representing Washburn tonight, and when I asked him for his thoughts about our partnership, he wrote me back the following. "The collaboration and support from Bloomington Public Schools for the school-based mental health services partnership with Washburn Center for Children has been outstanding and reflects the district's strong commitment to improving access to mental health services for children, particularly for disadvantaged families facing barriers to care. The commitment and collaboration has been effective and ongoing from an individual staff level to building administrators to the district's student support director level. We are thrilled that the school-based mental health services have continued to grow and expand this year, now serving early childhood through middle school ages at a total of six schools." With that, I'd like to introduce you to Tom. He's representing Washburn tonight, and we're thrilled to have him and Washburn as friends of the district.
Thank you very much, Eric, and I really want to say thank you to the Bloomington Public Schools School Board and to the school district for your leadership and vision and support with school-based mental health services. This whole idea started with a, with a really simple goal and request. We know very clearly that many, many kids who need mental health services never get them. Families face all kinds of barriers, transportation barriers, financial barriers to getting mental health services. Only about one in five kids who needs help ends up getting it. And we know in schools, teachers, school social workers, know the kids who are struggling, they know which children need help, but we also know that nationally only about fifteen percent of the kids who wind up being referred for school, for mental health services from schools or other sources actually end up getting them. What we've seen over the five years that we've had this program in place is really remarkable success. That fifteen percent success rate with referrals is well over eighty percent. When we have a therapist who's based directly in schools, when that, when that referral gets made, it follows through, and those kids end up getting help. So, it's been a tremendously successful collaboration in many ways, in terms of the kids getting help, the relationship and collaboration between the staff onsite in the buildings, and between Washburn as an agency, and between the district. So, we're very grateful, and thank you very much for the recognition tonight.
Thank you so much for coming this evening. Next up, we have the Born Again Jocks Random Act of Kindness Donation. The Born Again Jocks have been a longtime friend of the Bloomington Public Schools, and here tonight, we invite Dan Heinzman, Bob Swanson, and Jerry Nirigan to come forward. Andy Beaton, would you like to?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Chair.
It's a little quiet over there. Dan couldn't make it tonight. My name is Bob Swanson, along with Jerry Nirigan, and we're representing the Born Again Jocks, which is an organization, men's organization, for guys fifty-five and older that like to keep active in athletics, different sports. We even play cards. But, at that age, you gotta try and stay active. And every, every October, we hold a pancake breakfast to raise money for Jefferson and Kennedy's high school seniors that submit to us an application to try and give them a thousand-dollar scholarship. We give them about, about ten out of, well, maybe twenty-seven, twenty-eight applications that we get each year. Now, we raise money and, and give them the scholarships, and we have extra money that we would like to give to the schools for what we have, Born Again Jocks Random Acts of Kindness, where the activities for people that can't afford it, or fees, whatever, for their equipment, or, or their sports, whatever, can go for that. So, fifteen hundred dollars to each school, we've got a check here for three thousand dollars, so, somebody is gonna take that.
(laughing).
I'm accepting this on behalf of Kevin Grubner at Jefferson and at Kennedy High School. I want to thank the Born Again Jocks for their support, ongoing support of both of our high schools. Random Act is something that we utilize on a regular basis with students that need, just to fill that gap. When we have a fee that denies them access to an activity, or an event, or full participation in the school, Random Act is something that allows those students to be full members of our school body. So, this kind of donation is very important to us, so, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, gentlemen, appreciate everything that you do for us. Next up, we have Lights On After School Proclamation, and Mr. Russ Purdy. If I can have you come on up, I'm going to, let's see, yes.
(inaudible) the School Board of Independent School District 271 authorized the attached proclamation, declaring the week of October thirteenth, 2014, as the Lights On After School Week, the fifteenth annual national celebration of after-school programs. Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Now, I have this wonderful, long proclamation, and I'm going to read it into the record if I may, so, bear with me. I did clean my glasses. Whereas the Bloomington School Board stands firmly committed to quality out-of-school-time programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, engaging, and fun learning experiences to help children and youth develop social, emotional, physical, cultural, and academic skills, support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after their regular school day ends, build stronger communities by involving our students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of our young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among children, youth, families, and adults, engaging families, schools, and diverse community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. Whereas the Youth and Family Department has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that the quality out-of-school-time programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. Whereas Lights On After School, a national celebration of out-of-school-time programs held in October 2014, promotes the critical importance of quality before and after programs in the lives of children, their families, and their communities. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bloomington School Board declares the week of October thirteenth, 2014, Lights On After School Week, and be it further resolved that the Bloomington School Board enthusiastically endorses Lights On After School, and is committed to innovative out-of-school-time programs and activities that ensure the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children before and after school. That's a mouthful.
Well, thank you very much. My name is Russ Purdy, I'm the Youth and Family Coordinator at Hillcrest Elementary, and with me tonight is Aubrey Conley, who is the Youth and Family Coordinator at Ridgeview Elementary. I want to thank the School Board and Superintendent Fujitaki for allowing us a couple of minutes to talk about before and after-school programs and a big event that we have coming up tomorrow. You know, on any given school day in the United States, it's estimated that fifteen million students are alone and unsupervised after school, which is pretty staggering when you, when you think about it. Launched in 2000, Lights On After School is a nationwide event to draw attention to before and after-school programs and the impact that they have on students, families, and communities. Here in Bloomington, we have over a thousand students enrolled in our before-and-after-school Kid Safari program, which is based in each of the elementary schools. We also have a Galaxy After-School Program in each of the middle schools, and then numerous enrichment activities and classes throughout the school year. And not only do these programs help keep students safe and engaged, but I also think it helps the development of the child as a whole. We focus on such things as science and arts, academics, recreation, service learning, so we really try to use that time in an important kind of way. And to talk more about tomorrow's big event, I'm going to turn things over to Aubrey.
So, each year, Kid Safari hosts an after-school event called Lights On After School, where we celebrate our programs, and so we invite all Bloomington families to come to a free evening tomorrow night at Oak Grove Elementary from six to eight p.m. The first hour will feature carnival games that were created by each of our Kid Safari sites, and then the second hour will be a dance for families that will be DJed by two of our very own Youth and Family Coordinators. And then throughout the evening, there will be also visits from the Fire Department and Police Department. We have free food for families, some pizza and popcorn and ice cream, and then we will also be having a food drive to benefit Veep and selling some clay bowls that the students made at Kid Safari last year. Those will be available for donations that will then go to Veep as well. So, like I said, we invite everybody to come out and have a fun evening with us to help us celebrate the importance of our programs after school. Thank you.
All right, that sounds like a fun night tomorrow. That's from six to eight? And then the Veep food donations can be cans and, and, okay, great. Yes, we need to vote on this particular proclamation, so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we want to make sure we cross the Ts and dot the Is. All right, next is Part A. We were looking for a motion to approve Part A Agenda As Is.
So moved.
That was a tie on the, moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, now we move on to Part B, which is on the back of your agenda, for those of you keeping track in the audience there. Before we get into this particular portion of the agenda, I, I want to remind the board members, when, if you read a resolution, or if you're speaking into the mic, please lean in so that our folks at home can hear and the folks in the audience. All right, first one up here is the approval of the 2013-2015 negotiated contract between Independent School District 271 and the custodial maintenance and transportation employees. Who would like to read this one? Don.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the 2013-15 negotiated contract between the school district and the custodial maintenance and transportation employees, SEIU Local 284.
Second.
All right, Dawn and Marie. All right, Superintendent is going to handle this one. Mary Burrows is not available this evening.
Mary Burrows, our Human Resources Director, and Rod Ziffkovich, our Finance Director, can't be here tonight to fulfilling family obligations, so it's my pleasure to speak to this resolution that calls for the Board to take action on a proposed collective bargaining agreement between the district and the employees of the custodial maintenance and transportation unit. This contract meets the terms that the Board set on the negotiating parameters for us. This contract, this proposed contract was ratified by the unit on September 22nd, and the terms of this contract have, and the language of this contract has been reviewed by our district legal counsel. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize and extend our appreciation to the members of the two teams that negotiated this agreement. I'll read off their names. Gary Bergerson, Andy Carcioli, Bill Hager, Rodney Daniels, Ron Doncavich, Jesse Hansen, and Don Owens. Representing the district team, Mary Burrows was the leader. The members are Rod Ziffkovich, Tom A. Strike, Tim Reebok, and the Board Representative, Dick Bergstrom. Administration recommends that the Board approve this proposed contract. That concludes my comments.
All right, thank you Superintendent. Any, any questions, comments? Just quickly, as you can see on the screen, I was the board rep on this particular committee, and I would just like to say thank you to all those involved. It was good conversation, and we made, made a lot of progress, so, appreciate all the work.
One additional thing, I'd like to thank the employees for their patience and understanding as the teams negotiated this contract.
All right, we move to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is the approval of the 2013-2015 negotiated contract between Independent School District 271 and Health Services Employees, and the Superintendent will take this one as well. Who would like to read this?
I'll go ahead and read it.
Tom.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the 2013-15 negotiated contract between the school district and the Health Services, BFT Local 1182.
Second.
All right, Dawn got the second. Superintendent, what, what can you share with us?
A few things. The terms of this proposed contract meets the budgeting parameters established by the School Board. The language of this proposed contract was reviewed by our district legal counsel, and the unit ratified this proposed contract on October 2nd. Again, I'd like to read the members of the two teams that negotiated this agreement. Kathy Distel, Mary Sedergrin for the unit. And for the district, the team was led by Mary Burrows. The members are Rod Ziffkovich, Eric Melby, Eileen Kern, and the Board Representative is Tom Bennett. Again, I'd like to thank the employees of this unit for their patience and understanding as these teams negotiated this agreement, and this is the last agreement for the 13-15 contract. And the administration recommends the Board approve this proposed contract.
All right. Any questions, comments, before we move to vote? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up on our list is application for funds from the Minnesota State High School League Foundation, and Chris Lennox, Assistant Superintendent, is here to help us with this. Who would like to read this one in? Jim.
Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for grant funds to be used to pay athletic and activity fees for students who qualify.
Second.
All right, Marie. All right, Mr. Lennox, what can you share with us?
Thank you, Chairman Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the Board. This resolution is rather straightforward. It is to approve our annual application to the Minnesota State High School League, requesting funds that will assist students in our high schools with the cost of participation for extracurricular activities. It is the same type of funding that you just saw provided by the Born Again Jocks. I'd like to thank them again, and important for our, for our students. So, administration is recommending approval of this resolution.
All right, any, any questions, comments, before we move to vote? All those in favor, please signify by, yeah.
Question, sorry, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lennox, I don't know if you know, the totals for each of the schools, has that gone up in, each year, trending upwards?
Yeah, it's based on free and reduced numbers, so yes.
That's nice of them, okay, thank you.
All right, didn't mean to interrupt your question. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number four here, we're looking at some policy review. Those that came this evening, you get to watch policy review. We're looking for a second reading of the revised policy 419 that deals with tobacco-free environment, and Eric Melby, Director of Student Services, is here to help us understand this one. Who would like to read this one in?
Mr. Chair, I'll read it.
Yes.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the second reading of revised policy 419, tobacco-free environment.
Second.
All right. Eric, what have you got for us?
Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the Board, second reading, so I was here a few weeks ago to go through the first reading. Got some great feedback and some good discussion, made a few edits to the second version, including just simplifying some language in terms of listing millions of people, we just put person or people, and also changed the language to American Indian in the, in the policy, Part Four, Section A. Otherwise, based on our last discussion on those changes, this would be the complete policy.
Okay. Anyone have questions, comments? Do the, do the changes accurately reflect our conversation from, I think it was three weeks ago?
Yeah, just when I was walking in here, I noticed the, when we come in the doors, we got the no smoking sign. I'm wondering, since that's, this is now going to be including e-cigarettes, are we going to be updating these signs and putting no e-cigarettes as well, or has that discussion not happened yet?
It would be a good discussion for us to have. I don't know that I have an answer for that right now, but, good suggestion.
So, I was also at the football game on Friday, and I heard the announcements, and there's no smoking, and I was thinking, okay, next Friday, this policy will be changed, so, I wonder if he will include that in, when he's saying there's no smoking allowed or use of electronic cigarettes, or?
Yeah, we'll follow up on that thought.
Thanks.
Great question. Any more questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, next one up is revised policy 501. This is, deals with weapon-free schools. Who would like to read this one in?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Marie.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the second reading of revised policy 501, weapons-free schools. Second.
All right, Tom's got the second.
(inaudible).
And Eric Melby is seated here again, and he's going to help us understand this one.
Again, this is the second reading, so we had a good, good conversation last time when I brought the first reading. Took lots of feedback and suggestions, made some changes, point out a few of them. Some of it are just simplifying the language like we did with the previous policy in terms of just making it easier to read and understand. And one thing that came up last time in particular was basically the hold harmless provision if a student were to find a weapon on their way to school. The policy had kind of talked about just giving it to the principal, but not any other staff people, so we amended that to hold harmless anybody who does find something and turns it in right away to any staff person who then would bring it to the principal. Otherwise, other than some other sort of language and spelling edits, this is the revised policy.
All right. We've had some time to look this over, to check, to make sure that these changes were reflective of our conversation. Anyone have any questions or comments? Yeah, Rick.
Before we voted in, I just wanted to, once again, make sure that we don't need anything that talks about the toy gun aspect, just because, you know, I pointed out to the administration just recently, about two weeks ago, there was a kid that was sent home for pointing a crayon at someone like it was a gun. And so, just making sure that, that, that we aren't going to end up on Fox News is the next laughing stock of the nation, because someone reads the, the resolution, or the policy too literally.
Yeah.
Because it does say zero tolerance in there, right?
David, what do you, what do you think about that?
I think your policy's pretty good. I mean, obviously, you always rely on staff members to make decisions.
Sure.
Hopefully, they wouldn't go overboard on some of those things. We do have a no-tolerance policy, although, having said that, I know that there's slack for elementary school children, that's been done in the past, and...
Sure.
So, I know the staff is making good decisions out there, and I'm, I'm confident it'll continue.
Okay, good enough for me.
Good, thank you, good questions, Rick. Jim.
Mr. Chair, and it is unfortunate that I have to try to list every possible potential weapon or definition of a weapon, because it's always going to be something left out, but, but when we do these, we do them with all intense... but when we do these, we do them with all intents of any inclusion of everything, yet there might be some new weapon or something that might be modified or developed or something like that, brought to school or found, or whatever it is like that. But this is pretty much, covers virtually everything.
Correct.
All right.
You know, I guess we wouldn't want someone that shows up to school dressed as a teenage mutant ninja turtle to be sent home, because he has his...
Throwing star.
He has his throwing star and rubber nunchucks with him, so we might have to send a note home saying, hey, just remember, don't bring your throwing star and nunchucks to school.
There you go.
And I have a follow-up question, too. Is this policy put in the student handbook?
Yes.
Not, it's an entirety, but just...
Reference, yeah.
Some sections of regulations, so a lot of that, plus the tobacco, and all of them are put into our student handbook that the students receive.
And our student conduct guide, yep.
All good questions. All right, any more before we move to vote? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next one up is a policy 531, The Pledge of Allegiance, and Chris Lennox, the Assistant Superintendent, is going to help us understand this one. Who would like to read this one in? Jim.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to policy 531, The Pledge of Allegiance.
Second.
Don got that? All right, Chris.
Thank you, Chairman Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. Tonight, we do have policy 531, The Pledge of Allegiance, in front of you. The only changes here reflect uniform language changes. Other than that, nothing is being changed to the Pledge of Allegiance policy, and further, we are in compliance at all of our sites, so...
Excellent. All right, any questions, comments, before we move to vote? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next one up is the first reading, Policy 603, Pathways Advisory Committee. Who would like to read this one?
I can take this one.
All right, Rick.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the first reading of Policy 603, Pathways Advisory Committee.
Second.
And Marie. Chris Lennox stays seated for this one, and what can you tell us about this one?
Thank you again. This one will be a little, not quite as quick, a little longer as we go through this policy, but I would like to share information about Policy 603, which is the Pathways Advisory Committee. In your materials, you should have a redline copy, and if you'd care to follow along, I'd like to walk through some of the recommended changes. So in policy, starting in Section 2, General Statement of Policy, we're recommending dropping the statement that directs maximum feasible integration across subject areas. That language is not contained in either state statute nor in the MSBA model policy. We believe the purpose of the advisory committee itself is to consider when and where integration across subject areas makes the most sense, and then make those recommendations to the board. What we don't want is the committee members to feel they have to force-fit curriculum to accommodate maximum feasible integration across subject areas. So that's, that recommendation, or the rationale for that. This changes to Section 3, and responsibility are mainly language updates that reflect the same common policy language across all of our policies. There are three additional changes, though I do want to point out, under letter C in this section. The first is that we're recommending changing C1 to expand the definition of course of study beyond K-12, to include pre-K to adult programming, which then is aligned with our pathways to graduation framework. Second, we're recommending the addition of C5, which specifically calls out the intentional development of curriculum for students with particular or special needs, and that language is coming from the MSBA model policy. And finally, we're recommending dropping C6, Integration of Learning, for the same reasons we recommend dropping it from the general statement of policy. Again, we believe the integration of learning will be addressed by the Pathways Advisory Committee members as they make recommendations about the scope and sequence of district curriculum as indicated in the new item, C6. So those are the recommended changes in policy. We are also recommending some changes to regulations. You'll notice that all section of the regulations have been updated to reflect uniform language. In addition, under Section 1, Membership, we have a few changes. First, we're recommending that we do not call out specific job titles, as titles can change, and instead use the term superintendent or designee. This has been done throughout the document. There is also an update from the original draft, I believe it's item 4 in blue for you, that outlines membership from other district committees. That was left out in the original, and we wanted to make sure we pointed that out, so we used blue, and you should be able to see that in your materials. I believe there's also a document that was included that outlines the shift from the former District Curriculum Advisory Committee to the new Pathways Advisory Committee, so you can see that graphically, what that representation is shifting from to the new committee. That, of course, is aligned with the world's best workforce expectations. Ultimately, I do want to point out, the board has the authority for membership, as this is your committee, and the list of members must be brought to you for approval as outlined in Section 1B, Item 2. So moving on, and beginning with Section 1C, throughout the rest of the regulations, you'll see we are recommending dropping language that is overly prescriptive. The proposed language to be dropped includes very detailed information, such as specifics about rotation of members, timing and submission of meeting minutes, the content of meeting agendas, specific timelines for agenda distribution and reporting. It's our belief that the, that level of detail doesn't belong in regulations, it really should be given to the committee, and they should be empowered to determine these specific operational details for themselves. One additional area I'd like to highlight comes from a question that was brought up about the role of the committee. That is outlined in Regulation, Section 2, Functions, and I'd just like to highlight there that this committee, the Pathways Advisory Committee, exists to make recommendations to the school board on matters related to curriculum and instruction. And you'll see that includes developing district goals, recommending a specific cycle for continuously reviewing all curricular areas, recommending specific scope and sequence in curricular areas, a biannual review, and recommendations about the district assessment program, and contribute curriculum information to the annual report in accordance with Minnesota State statute and board policy. It's a lot of stuff, but that's an overview of the changes, or recommended changes to Policy 603 and the regulations, and at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and certainly will be happy to take feedback tonight and over the next two weeks. This is the first reading, so before we bring it back, we want any and all feedback.
All right, questions, comments, concerns? Yeah, Jim.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Lennox, I can't remember reading the Pathways Advisory Committee structure, but since we have such a, have had such a good one in place with, now from a historical perspective, PER and then DCAC, that as they went on, and with the cycles like that, too. So is this, in a sense, replacing that, so that we can, I don't know if there's any directive anymore that the state says you shall have a report about curriculum and instruction? We used to have an annual, and we included in our annual report, something like that. The committee had reviewed, advisory committee had reviewed it, and da-da-da, and so on. So this committee, the Pathways Advisory Committee, was originally set up for a certain structure and whatever instructions to do, and then, and then the DCAC was another one. And is it simple to say, yeah, we can combine the two, and I know Dr. Anderson could certainly offer some additional comments, too. Combining the two and working it out, so it satisfies the state requirement to do that, plus maintaining our committee structure with citizens and parents involved in the process.
Right, so, and happy to defer if Dr. Anderson wants to join in, but what I would tell you is, under your policy responsibility, so Section 3A, it cites Minnesota Statute 120B-11. That is now where the world's best workforce sits. So what they did is they went back in and re-authored that particular section to align with this. So we are still called out to have this committee and to do a report. Now, the report is changing from the, what it used to be, that October annual report, to really be focused on world's best workforce, which we have, will have scheduled in December, our public meeting, that we'll be bringing back to you at that time. And then that will become an annual, a cyclical process, that each year, we'll report on our results from the prior year and talk about goals and expectations moving forward into the future.
Okay, and there may be Dr. Anderson, the reason is, some of the people who signed up for the DCA, you know, for specific purposes, now are being asked to participate in a slightly different scope or activity.
So Board Member Oliva can weigh in. Last Monday, we had our first DCAC District Curriculum Advisory Committee meeting of the year, and we went through, as a large part of the agenda, the update to the world's best workforce legislation, and we found in the statute where 120B-11 subdivision 3 largely still exists, as it did. What we worked through as a committee is that the board would be taking action in October, and that we see great opportunity because of the positioning that we've done over time, and with the pathways to graduation work that we've done, that we're lining up really well, so it wouldn't be a major transition, but rather an update, and the policy language is meant to reflect that same thing. Director Stegoff has been a part of that, I know many board members, Director Bartolado has been there, and Director Oliva last week, so I think they understood, they said, well, what about any members who aren't here tonight? What are the ways they get the same update? And we reiterated that any committee member could update missing persons, or they could correct me, or Board Member Oliva as well, but I got the sense, and triangulate if you would, that they understood that it wouldn't be, you know, a grand departure, but rather an update in practice.
Yeah, Nellie.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that remembering back a few months ago, and talking to a representative from the Department of Education, when I was talking about the specific recommendation of going towards, moving towards the advisory committee for the best world's workforce, okay. What we now have is pathways, right? That, because this committee was going to be doing pretty much what the district curriculum committee was doing, that there was no need to have two different committees, that we only needed one big committee, so I think it totally makes sense. Now, my question would be, okay, so everybody's given the opportunity to stay in that committee, you know, the people that's, that it's already working in the DCAC, but are we going to be inviting other people from the community as well, and are we going to have participation of students? And if we end up maybe having too many people who are interested in participating, are we maybe contemplated the possibility of having subcommittees?
So a couple things, as far as the committee, as it currently exists and is evolving, there are no student members, I don't believe, on the committee. There are three at-large members that the board selects and forwards, and then there are four additional members from existing committees, which are early childhood, the district diversity, two from that committee, and one from the district special education committee. So those are the additional members coming. Others are all tied back to sites, so most of those nominations have come from the sites themselves, but certainly all of them come together, will be presented to the board for your approval, so if there's any sitting vacant, or people want to be encouraged to participate or be part of that in the future, all of that exists. The second part of that, in terms of engagement, that, the stakeholder meetings we've been out, we're trying to collect that information to bring back to the committee and to the school board, so it was a bit of a dual purpose. We didn't want to make another committee, but we did want to get that feedback, so that we could use that, or give it to the committee, and they could use that as they make recommendations going forward.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Rick?
On subdivision 3, where it talks about the district advisory committee, one of the things it says is, it should, to the extent possible, include teachers, parents, support staff, students, and other community residents. So the committee now is, it's all, well, it's, yeah, we have the three at-large, 15 parents, because each school gets one, and then the four additional. Do we need to add a student or two, and/or teachers? I mean, I know, I know most of the, most of the hard work, but part of the problem, too, is that, not to degrade what the committee does, but they're asking people that are not necessarily curriculum experts to make curriculum decisions. So most of what the committee does, if you haven't been to it, is we give our feedback, we give our impressions, their thoughts and opinions, and then the subcommittees go back to their subcommittee, so the subcommittee say we're doing K-12 art, or I guess it'd be elementary art. That'll be a subcommittee, and that's mostly teachers, but we'll also appoint members from DCA to that, and that's where a lot of the quote-unquote "hard work" goes in. But, so I guess, the question would be, should we, or need, do we need to include teacher or teachers, and additional support staff and/or students? For instance, it could be someone from student councils from the two high schools, I mean, we could, we can choose, but that's what it says in the statute that we should include, if possible, and I don't think it would be impossible to do.
So with regard to the question about teachers, our interpretation heretofore has been just what you suggested, which is, you know, certainly teacher representatives from those committees come and address the district curriculum advisory committee when they report out about their work, but they're also intimately involved in those subgroups that split off from the committee. So in a sense, we have a bunch of funnels going to DCA as well, not only the 15 sitting there, but they've been liaisons to those subcommittee working groups, and then they give reports out. To the question of students, in the past, we've also talked about, well, the board has had and does work with an advisory committee of students. If that still is in existence, you might have a strategy whereby one of the agenda items there deals with some question or topic that comes out of DCA. At some point, it is a consideration, how large do you want the group to be, how effective that can be, but, you know, if you wanted to specifically address that student question, there's a couple different ways to come on it.
Yeah, Don.
I just have a question. It used to be K-12, and now it's expanded early childhood to adult, so there's representatives from each of the school buildings, you know, elementary, middle school, et cetera. I would assume that the parent advisory could be the representative for early childhood, but I don't see anybody that would be representing the adults and the adult end of that, since there's not a building, you know, designated to that, so I think that would be another addition that maybe we should have, if we're going to do adult.
Any other questions? Now's the time to ask these. I, go ahead, Don.
Was there any consideration of adding a representative from the adult basic education?
Was there any consideration of adding a representative from the adult basic education? Was?
At this point, we took the three district committees that you see on the chart and put them in. Again, this is, it's your committee. So we, you know, to some degree, I would, in the spirit of consultation, all voices are good, right? So if you want a student voice, that's great. Talk amongst yourselves, and we'll have that reflected, if that's a choice, and say we want to have a student rep, we want to have someone from these other committees on this advisory committee. We're happy to include them. Again, at some point, you have to decide the size of that committee, and how large do you want it to become? But that's, it's your committee.
I think it does make sense if we say it's going to be pre-K through adult, and we should have someone on both sides.
I think it makes good sense. Of course, you answered my next question, was how big is this committee getting? In its current iteration, what, how many chairs are we filling?
You are going to be at about 23 members, I think, and if so, with a rep from ABE, that'd be 24, or a student 25. You're getting around that roughly number.
And we're looking at a two-year commitment for members on this?
That's what we've had. And of course, as that membership comes back, that would be up to the board. Sometimes there's people that are wanting to stay, and if there's no other member stepping forward, sometimes that happens. Sometimes someone has something come up sooner, a life change, and they rotate out sooner than that. But that's, generally, the recommendation was a two-year commitment.
Okay, yeah, Don.
It may, that may create some changes within those other committees. I don't know how the other ones, but I know the special advisory doesn't have the same chair for two years, but they were looking at having the chair serve there. So they would have to have their chair stay on a year after they're the chair, or be chair for two years. So some of those other committees might need to change their structure, depending who they pick to go on that committee. That makes sense?
Yeah, yeah, because it's calling for the position of the chair. Yeah. Yeah, Jim.
And then the category, as, you know, you gave us the little chart, it talks about the current composition and the proposed pathways. The at-large reps, I think while it was good in DCAC, you know, to have maybe a business rep or a state rep, something like that, too. It also talks, you talk about it being early childhood, or any one of the advisory committees. But now that's a committee rep, advisory committee representatives in that one section. And then the at-large reps, probably should be defined a little bit better, or, you know, is it gonna be, you know, a chamber rep or business rep or something, something on that? Not necessarily say at-large, I mean, that's kind of a nebulous term to just say, you know, reps. So I'd like to see, maybe, or suggest that we have a slightly different category for those three reps, if three reps are, you know, the key number.
All right, so I guess I'm coming back to my question, how big is the committee getting? Just an opinion, committees that are 25, 30 people, effectiveness, efficiency, I'm just looking at logistically, can people consistently for two years make that appointment? How often do we need these, every single person on the committee to be there? That type of thing.
I think they're fair questions. Quorum language in there said you can't take a vote unless you have at least 30% of the voting members. And we do, it has been the case that a certain site has had more than one person show up to meetings regularly. We just identify by, by the, you know, policy and regulations that one of them is a voting member. We don't want to create, you know, vote-offs at a particular site, for example. And I failed to mention that about three years ago, we intended or attempted to intentionally recruit from student councils at the high schools, students who could show, and we had a very difficult time with attendance, because whatever their best intentions were, they had difficulty finding their way to our 7:00 to 9:00 PM on Monday night meetings. I'm sure it had nothing to do with the content of the meetings, but I think it's a fair question to say, how large do we want it to be? We've had, I think, reasonable, humbly submitted reasonable effectiveness with about 15 to 18 showing up. We're talking about adding a number of folks, and that's not good or bad necessarily. It's a consideration I think that's worth thinking about between now and next time.
Yeah, I just, just food for thought. Yeah.
There's, how many are there now, 20? There's 15 schools, right?
Yeah.
Me, you, and then the three.
I'm there every time.
Yeah, and then the three at-large. So there's 20, and I've been going there for a couple of years, and it's not, at 20, it's not unruly. It's not like there's, you feel like there's, you know, 100, right?
But are there, but are there 20?
Yeah, well, 20, rarely does everybody show up. You know, the hard part is that it's four times a year, right? So if you miss one, it's gonna be another three months before. But yeah, so I, to that concern, if we added four more people, in my opinion, I don't think that that would all of a sudden create a situation where it felt like it was out of control.
Yeah, Nellie.
Well, the way that the best workforce plan states it, you know, the way it reads, it really calls for a lot of people. It's pretty obvious in the document that it calls for a lot of participation, a lot of opportunity for members in the community to be part of it, regardless of the number. And that's the reason, that's part of the reason why they have also recommended subcommittees, or, you know, I know that we don't want to have a bunch of committees all over the place, but it might be something that maybe we need to look at after a while, I don't know. Now, I suppose that the current members of DCA are aware of the change, and, you know, that they are not in obligation of continuing to be part of it, but, you know, they want to give opportunities to other people as well. You know, there's a lot of people in the community that are dying to participate, too, so they don't have to feel like they have to, but if they want to continue, they're always welcome, right?
Correct.
I mean, they know what this entitles, right? I mean, this is a pretty heavy one, it seems like, that we're getting here into something more deeper.
And I think the sense, you know, we intentionally went to cover those points, I think, at the last meeting. And my sense was that folks felt like we were well-positioned to take the next step, update practice. So in that sense, it's a testament to the groundwork we've laid with pathways, and I think the reasonable work that committee's been doing to build their capacity. There are, it is the case that some members have been there for a number of years.
Number like 20, right?
Or maybe 27. But I think it's the case, they find efficacy in being participants. And then there's some other situations where we've had regular turnover. So, yeah, we made sure to indicate what the work would be about, so I think they're feeling equipped to do the update.
Good conversation. Any more comments? I know they're both busy taking notes.
Yes.
If I'm hearing the board, as we leave and take this feedback to what seems like consensus additions would be represented from adult basic ed and a student representative, potentially, and we can add those back in. Any other specific feedback or language, I just encourage board members, please send that to us so that we can look at that, and it can be reflected before we bring this back to you for a second reading in a couple of weeks.
All right, Jim.
Did we decide for the at-large reps, we would leave it at three, but then we haven't clarified what the at-large means? I mean, we had a business.
If you want to send language on that, we're happy to get that, you know, out, or bring it back to the board. Currently, in policy, it reads, three citizens nominated and selected by the school board will be appointed as at-large members representing business, senior citizens, or other community elements. All at-large members will have or will have had children attending school within the district. That's.
Okay, so it does name.
Regulation, membership, so 1A, five.
It does name two out of the three. I mean, the third one is anybody that we vote on.
And again, all of those names will come back to you for your approval.
Right.
Yeah, Nellie.
Yeah, since, the idea is also that we have a diverse committee. Are we also including in this, like, parent representatives from different groups, parent groups?
To the best that we can, yes. And in fact, the committee representatives, four that are being added from the other committees, two come directly from the district diversity advisory committee. So hopefully, that would add to that group as well.
Is there a specific number that they want us to have when it comes to diversity?
No, just to the extent possible that it reflects parents and diversity.
As far as the students go, I mean, we can always use a youth advisory committee to ask curriculum questions instead of trying to get student members on this particular committee. It might actually be more effective.
My suggestion is gonna be, because if you, excuse me, if you're only gonna have one, you're gonna pick a Jefferson or Kennedy, you gotta weigh that. And as Dr. Anderson said, it's tough to get kids to come, you know, to something like that, kind of heavy, deep material, four times a year, you know, they have homework, they have jobs, they have a lot on the plate. And to get a two-year commitment out of them, I guarantee it's not gonna.
You're gonna be up with column?
Sure.
Hate to say it, but.
I like the idea of the youth advisory committee.
And it might, yeah, it might be more effective, because then we'd have a larger group of them, and then we could always bring their thoughts and ideas back to the pathways advisory committee.
Yeah.
So, we'll go that route, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Good conversation. I think we need to vote on at least this first reading. So, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right. Next up is first reading of revised policy 410, family and medical leave. And the superintendent is.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, who likes, I'm sorry, Maureen.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the first reading of policy, of revised policy 410, family and medical leave.
Second.
All right, superintendent.
I'm speaking on behalf of our HR Director, Mary Burrows. Existence of this policy is mandated by state law. In other words, all school districts must have a family medical leave policy. Administration is proposing revisions to the current policy to bring it in alignment with the Minnesota School Board Association model policy. Administration is making a recommendation, because MSBA has staff that diligently monitors changes to state and federal law. This MSBA staff also makes changes to the model policy to remain in compliance with state and federal law. So our plan, administration's plan is if the board approves this revision to this policy, we will make changes, propose changes to our policy whenever MSBA makes changes to their policy. We've reviewed this with district legal counsel, and they're in congrats with this change.
All right. Questions, comments? Jim?
So, this could change annually, depending on the legislature and/or whoever.
It's true.
And MSBA has primary contact in order to help us stay updated.
Yes.
All right. Any more comments, questions, before we move to vote? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, now we are down to revise policy 302. Superintendent, I'd like to read this one.
Hi, Ken.
Don.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the first reading of revised policy 302. Superintendent?
Second.
And Maureen. Superintendent, what do you have for us?
We have an upcoming professional development session of the school board that will address superintendent evaluation. In preparation for that, we reviewed this policy, we looked at the Minnesota School Board Association model policy, and we consulted with the professional development consultant, Dennis Cheeseborough, about this, and he recommends, and he agrees with changing, deleting our current policy and regulation and replacing it with the Minnesota School Board Association policy. So that's our recommendation.
All right. Questions, comments? I just had one that I think amounts to housekeeping. Looking at general responsibilities, Section 3, Letter B. It could just be my brain not reading this correctly. It says superintendent shall annually evaluate all district administrators that directly report.
Yes.
Should it say directly report to the superintendent?
We can make that change for clarification.
It just didn't make sense when I read it out.
Okay.
Other than that, that's all I had. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Now we get to the board member reports. This is an opportunity for each board member to share what they've been up to since our last board meeting. Could be committee meetings, could be interactions in the district, and I offer the opportunity for everybody to share. Who would like to start this one off? Rick?
The Burlington United for Youth meeting was canceled last month, so I wasn't able to attend, but it has been rescheduled for this month, or it will, it is on the schedule, I should say, for this month, at the end of the month. So I will be able to report back in November. The district curriculum advisory committee did meet last Monday, we just had that discussion. The members were looking for more clarification as to what this new pathways advisory committee will be, and I think we addressed that issue. So after we have our final approval of the document, I believe, at the next, the next, then pathways committee will meet in December, and we'll be able to pass that information along to them. Oh, and, hold on a second, Steve Abrahamson from Ridgefield Elementary, they had a fundraiser, and if they beat his goal of raising $15,000, he agreed to sleep, spend the night on top of the roof. So he is there, into, he said, I just set up the tent again, it blew off the roof about an hour after school, so now we tied it down. So anybody who would like to go wave at Mr. A, or drive into the parking lot and honk the horn loudly, he will greatly appreciate that. They beat the goal of 15,000, they came in at about $27,000 this year, so.
That's awesome.
They're very excited.
So the horn honking goes up until 9:30, so we don't wake the neighbors, but other than that?
Maybe the board can all go over.
He's there tonight, yes.
He's up there tonight. Okay. Good for Mr. A. Anyone else? Jim?
Yeah, the CFAC committee, that's Citizens Financial Advisory Committee, met at the end of September, and it's the first meeting they've had in quite a while, and Rod was there and conducted it. And we were, we discussed a variety of things, membership, participation, different things like that, but they did recommend that we maintain our fund balance policy the way it is now. There was a question about, because of the down, the right sizing and some of the budgetary concerns that we're gonna have in the next year, would we want to drop below a certain percentage for our fund balance? And so they unanimously said, no, we need to have the fund balance set up at 5% or higher, or whatever it was, not to drop below 5%. So that was their recommendation, I'm sure. Share that with you, because according to, according to the past practices, advisory committees come and share with the rest of the board what the committee has recommended, and. and, and then they go ahead, we go ahead and implement it. But, of course, that leads to the whole discussion of what is the nature of committees and how do we vote? Do we vote as a committee member, or do we just participate as an observer, many of the advisory committees that we have? So there's going to be more on that one, because we do need to have a elected chair, and we do need to have some additional members of, from the finance community in our, on the committee. Second committee would be the superintendent evaluation, that we have to have a meeting. I've been collecting some information, and we want to try and have a meeting, some committee, a committee meeting prior to the end of the month. So as soon as I get some more information from MSBA, I'll be contacting the members so that we can get together and have that prior to the end of October. Or, yeah, when is our consultant coming in and talking about it? That's the November?
That's November, yeah.
November meeting, yes. So definitely, we want to have some things in place prior to that meeting.
Yeah.
And then not to mention, all the other activities that have been going on, the musicals and the soccer, Jefferson is advancing tomorrow night to the section playoffs. And unfortunately, there was a collision, and I guess I can report this on air, collision that had occurred as two, two players were going up for a header, and we heard a click and then a thud as the two heads collided, you know, and then the ball moved, but then they were both, both dropped down. One suffered a concussion and a broken, broken nose, Jefferson student did, and then the Prior Lake fellow hurt his head and, and had a big lump there, too. So we talked a little bit about the need for maybe revisiting this headbands or whatever, an optional headband that they wear to protect their heads during headers or collisions during the game. Not necessarily a helmet, but as studies have shown that, studies have shown that they don't have much effect on a concussion, then we know football helmets don't have much preventative effect on a concussion either. But there's more and more talk about that, and I know some out of, outstate teams do use those bands, a lot of the gals' teams do. And so it's just a necessary concern that, that unfortunately, reared its ugly head, pardon the pun, but during soccer games. But then there's so many of those other games going on, and activities going on, that we're also, we all enjoy so much going to. Thank you.
All right. Other members, Dawn?
Well, I was at Kennedy, had their National Honor Society inductees, so I attended that ceremony, and then attended several of the Jefferson homecoming activities this week, including the dance Saturday night for a while. So I just wanted to thank unbelievable amount of parents there that turned out to volunteer and make that event great for our students. And then I also went to the Chamber of Commerce meeting, our community meeting, that the School Board was to, to host, and just want to say there was great conversation there about our pathways to graduation, and thank the chamber and the city council members that were there for the great conversation. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? I'll save my list for last, it gets a little long. Yes, Nellie?
I have a long report, sort of. Well, first of all, I just want to say that I attended two of the stakeholder meetings, one with the Latino parents and one with our youth leadership group. And they were both just great. I think a lot of good conversation, a lot of, you know, opinions from both parents and students. It was really interesting to hear all that they, you know, that they have to say, and definitely seems like they have so much more to say that it's almost like we need to keep, continue to provide those opportunities for them, because it was not enough for, either for the parents or for the students. And then our legislative committee for the board will be meeting next Monday at five forty-five, and we'll be giving you a report after that. And last week, if I remember, it was last week, okay, September twenty-nine, thirtieth, and first, I happened to go to Washington DC, and I'll tell you why. As you know, I am Colombian, so I am a Latina, or member that you happen to have at the table. And that is the reason why I am a member of the National Association of Latino Elected and Appointed Officials. And they have an initiative that's called Naleo Education Leadership, that provides opportunity to all Latino elected official, officials in the country to attend an annual meeting, a summit, an education. Now, as part of their initiative, they have scholarships that they provide to many different elective officials who want to apply for them. And I happened to apply, and I happened to obtain a scholarship, and that's the reason why I decided to go. Now, Naleo is a nonprofit organization that focuses specifically on education. Well, part of Naleo, there's something called Nelly, happens to be Nelly, because it's Naleo Education Leadership Initiative, and they are the ones that provide the funds that have to do everything to do with education. So I went to Washington DC, and I met with another fifty-five policymakers from across the country, and there were board members, legislators, and from Minnesota, I was the only school board member. And then from the legislation, we had Carlos Mariani and Senator Melissa Francine. So the three of us were the only ones representing Minnesota. So we were very proud to be there, definitely. And we, we were there to discuss the state of Latino education and the strategies to ensure that Latino students have access to positive educational experiences and high-quality instruction. Now, why did we do this? Because we are aware that Latinos are the second-largest population group in the states. And so, which means that, you know, educational attainment of Latino students is extrinsically connected to the success and prosperity of the country. So, and that's the reason why we need to make sure that Latino students, and not only Latino students, but all other students can have access to high-quality education. And the summit focused very much on teacher quality. Now, we had, we had the opportunity to hear, you know, from leading education experts from both public and private and nonprofit sectors. And we also had speakers, we got to hear speakers that came from the White House, from the US Department of Education, and also we had the President of the National Education Association there. We were two days working from eight to eight, no breaks. It was very rigorous. All day long, we got to hear speakers, and we got to learn a lot. And so, not even during lunchtime, we got a break, because during lunchtime, we had a speaker as well. So it was pretty intense. But it was all very informative. It was not with the idea of, you know, this is what we want you to do, this is what we want you to go do in your, in your states. It was all very informative. It was very much related to what is going, going on right now in terms of education, you know, policy, governance topics. Now, because this was a very good experience that I went through, I decided that I want to share that with the rest of the school board. And that is the reason why I led superintendent for GITAC, you know, that I will be putting a PowerPoint together, because the amount of information that we got, there is so much that I cannot just tell you, you know, we talked about this and this and that, without really giving you the information. And so I'm going to be presenting to the board sometime next month. It won't be a very long presentation, but I just want to share that, those numbers, the statistics, and all the very valuable information that we had, that we got. And to end with this part of my report, too, just want to make sure that, once again, that you are aware that this was, the trip that I took was because of a scholarship that I was given by Naleo, that I did not request the school district or the school board for any kind of support, financial support, or any kind of. Naleo, like I said before, is a nonprofit, nonprofit organization. I know there were concerns about the gift law, that we, we received information about that, actually, the Monday before, I was scheduled to travel, surprisingly. And so I, I made sure to, to, to ask the organization, to ask Naleo, and to consult with our attorney, just to make sure that everything was legal. I also talked to MSBA, and by the way, we need to take another look at the HITA bill and the gift law, because there are some exemptions there to that, to that particular law. And some of those exceptions include conferences related to education and other things. So I invite you to take a look at that document again. What else can I tell you? Just, yeah, in case that there were any concerns about, you know, the nature of my trip, just want you to know, everything is good. It was all very clean. We didn't go there to party, but, and that it was very legal, and then our attorney can give faith of that. If you want to say something about, please, I'd really appreciate that.
Well, I can tell you that this wouldn't have been an issue until July of this year, when that new law went into effect. And as I told you before, there's basically two situations that can occur that would make a trip like that impossible. One is if they're a registered lobbyist, or the association has registered lobbyists. When Nelly called me, I did look at the Public Disclosure Board website, and they aren't registered on that, so that one seemed to be clear. And the other law is that more fuzzy one about whether or not the individual or organization is something that has a direct financial interest that's coming before the board. I looked at the, the syllabus, the agenda they had at the meeting, and I really didn't see anything that would cause any problems.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's all, and if you have any questions, I can probably answer those questions when I bring my presentation to you.
Chris? Yeah, Jim?
Who are the other people that went with you? You said there were three, one from?
From Minnesota, yeah. State Representative Carlos Mariani and Senator Melissa Francine, and they both happened to be in education committee for the legislation. So, three of us came back with a lot of good information. And by the way, I was really proud, you know, as I heard so many stories from so many legislators and board members from other parts of the country, I was very proud to be part of Minnesota in the school board in Bloomington, because definitely, I think we're doing a good job in Minnesota.
All right. Thank you. Any, any other board members? Anything else that want to pull teeth? All right, I, I tried to shorten my, my notes tonight, but it's been a while since we had our last meeting, so. I had the opportunity to attend the National Honor Society induction ceremony over at Kennedy High School. There were thirty-six new members this year. And just so you know, they used electric candles. There's sort of a ceremonial lighting of a candle, and the, the fire marshal said no to real candles, so they turned on the electric candles.
I remember that from a.
Which was all, it was kind of fun to see. Had the opportunity to attend three middle school cross-country meets. Just a real quick shout-out to all the people that make the, the cross-country sports in the fall happen. A lot of kids participate there, and not just in our district, but all the neighboring districts. And it's a great way for these kids to get out, get some exercise, meet and greet some new, make some new friends within the, their communities. So I just want to say thanks to the folks that make that happen. Attended the Kinderparents Coffee Connection at Olson Elementary. And this is primarily for the kindergarten parents, many of whom are new, just have a brand-new kindergarten student that's coming into the district. They have an opportunity to meet the principal, Paul Meyer, and some of the, some of the folks that work at the school over at Olson Elementary, ask questions, you can have some coffee, and a, I think there were blueberry and chocolate doughnut holes. I attended the, the following stakeholder meetings. Was that the Youth Leadership over at Kennedy? The English-speaking parents right here in Oak Grove Middle School, and then the Early Childhood Parent Advisory Council. They, they sort of morphed the presentation into their monthly meeting. This was a, in connection with the Pathways to Graduation stakeholder meetings. And the board members' role at those meetings were essentially do, we, we would do a quick introduction, and then it was just sort of sit back and listen and learn. We weren't there to answer questions. And depending on the night you were there, Eric Melby was there, Rick Kaufman was there presenting, Chris Lennox was there, there were note-takers, and we're coordinating, currently coordinating all that conversation. And then that'll be put into a more manageable form, and then brought in front of the board in an upcoming session. Went to Jefferson Homecoming Coronation. A lot of fun, some more of my coworkers were there. It was fun to see the school spirit, see the kids get dressed up for it, see their individual little dances before they walked down on the rice paper. Lot of fun to see the, the kids enjoying what they're doing at their schools. When that was over, it gave me the opportunity to have lunch at Jefferson High School in their cafeteria. For moms and dads that are listening, I know there's lots of you watching on TV right now, I took what was offered to me out of each food group, and when I was done, I was full. Now, I'm not at my playing weight, I'm not at my high school weight, but I managed to be full. And so the kids that tell you that they're, they don't get enough food, maybe they're not taking their fruits and vegetables. Just saying. It was, it was a, it was a good meal. Want to say thanks to the kitchen staff, and then the, the custodial staff. I had a chance to talk to representatives from both of those staffs, and they're doing a great job at those schools there. Attended a nine-seventeen board meeting. Majority of that agenda was taken up with a presentation on the new insurance rates. They're currently looking for new insurance vendors. It's a process that, that goes through, I, I think they have three-year contracts on their insurance rates, and that, that's a fascinating conversation for anyone who's interested in insurance. It was, it was interesting. Attended the Jefferson Athletic Hall of Fame inductees ceremony at Lincoln Field. They had seven new members there. Attended parent-teacher conferences at Kennedy. This was my first try over at Kennedy High School. We have a freshman there. And I, I would like to say a word of thanks to all this, the staff and the teachers who stayed through what was already a long day and into the evening. At the, at the table set up there, I know it's not the best way to do it. I do not currently have a better format for them, so this is not a criticism, I'm just saying, I really appreciate that the, the teachers stayed as long as they did to answer the questions from parents that, that may not have a lot of opportunities to get in and see those, those teachers. So appreciate that. Had an opportunity to get over to the Jungle Book at Jefferson. Students hit the mark on that one, it was fantastic. A lot of thanks to the, the staff, and then the parent volunteers that, that help out at the, at the door. So we, we really couldn't do it without our volunteers. Had an opportunity, and this is my last one, so bear with me, to attend Hillcrest. I was at a teacher potluck over at Moyer Park, and I was talking to some teachers, and they happened to be from Hillcrest, and they invited me over to their school, and they said, you should come and see our Artful Learning Program. And I said, okay, how about tomorrow? And they looked at me and said, really? I said, I'm, how about tomorrow? I got time. So when I showed up tomorrow, which I think was a Thursday, they had an itinerary ready for me, they had a card that was signed, and I went to one class that was doing an experiment on cleaning up mock oil spills. So they had a little tub, they had some gravel in there to simulate the shoreline, some water, and then they, they put some ink, something on, mixed in with the oil, and then they, they had to purchase, they had millions of dollars, fake money, that they could purchase cleanup tools with, and they had to, they had to decide which tools clean the oil up the best. And they asked me if I wanted to try it, and I said, you know, I don't want to spend anyone's million dollars, so. It was, it was really fascinating to see these kids work together, to figure out how it worked, to collaborate, to communicate, and then to, to. it worked, to collaborate, to communicate, and then to, to debrief afterwards, which one of these, this was paper towel, they had a little thing that scooped up oil, that didn't really work right because it kind of fell on the floor. They, they talked about how it worked and what, what, what worked and what didn't and it was really fun just to be a fly on the wall, albeit a big fly, and just sit there and listen and learn. I had an opportunity to sit and have lunch at Hillcrest and once again, when you take everything that's offered, I was full. Sat with a few students and as a matter of fact, I sat, Nellie, I sat with your daughter. She was gracious enough to let me sit there as long as I stayed away. The second class was using their Chromebooks, they were all synced together via some cool software and they were taking a test, but it was in the, in the form of a, of a game. And so I've never seen so many students, I believe this was a second grade class, that were so anxious and so willing to take a test. But there was instant feedback, it was up on their smart boards and they were, they were, each of them had a piece of paper covering their, their Chromebooks so that they, the student next to them might not have a chance to see their answer. So it was, it was, it was very interactive, it was very informative and it was a lot of fun to see these kids really enjoying just literally taking a test. I'm not even sure if they knew they were taking the test, but it was a lot of fun to see and I really appreciate the offer to come and listen and learn at one of our, one of our schools. Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm, that ends my, my report, Superintendent?
I have three topics. First is, I'm sad to report the district's severe weather team will be meeting to prep for the upcoming polar vortex season. The second topic is school board sessions. I'm going to take a risk here and bundle four sessions and ask for motion for approval on these four sessions. The first will be a closed session for negotiations on October 20th and that's going to follow the professional development session we're having that night. So again, it's a closed session for negotiations on October 20th. The second proposed session will be a study session on November 17th. It's going to begin at 7:00 PM and we're having a speaker, outside speaker come in, Kyle Upoff, he's going to talk about career planning. The third session will be on December 1st. And that's the public meeting that's called for by the World's Best Workforce Law and it will begin at 7:00 PM. The fourth session will be December 15th, it's a study session to begin at 7:00 PM. So that's my motion for four sessions.
Sound moved.
Second.
All right. Looks like we've added a lot of work to our calendar, but I think we're up to the task. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right.
And now I'd like to have a motion to cancel a session that's December 22nd. It is the meeting study sessions scheduled for December 22nd, that's of course, the week of holidays, so we're requesting that that meeting be canceled.
Sound moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, canceling December 22nd. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right.
Okay, the third topic is the board youth advisory council. I'd like a motion to establish the following meetings at 5:30 to be held, these meetings are to be held at Oak Grove Middle School Media Center. On Monday, October 27th, there's a high school student meeting. On Monday, November 10th, there's a middle school student meeting. On Monday, February 9th, there's a high school student meeting and on March 23rd, 2015, there's a middle school student meeting. That's what we're proposing.
Are these all the same time at 5:30?
They're all at 5:30 here at the Oak Grove Middle School Media Center.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Are those all preceding regular school board meetings?
It looks like from their dates, that's.
Because I know in our, in our, in the committee meeting, we talked about maybe meeting at, like high school meeting at one of the high schools. And if they're on the meeting nights that we have, it's convenience of having them come here and having us go there, I mean, that was, that's why we're meeting here.
That's why we're meeting here.
I think it'd be, yeah, I think it'd be easiest to do it here and then when we do the Veep meeting, we could do the Veep meeting at Veep.
Yeah. Okay, it looks like the, the 10th, November 10th and February 9th are the second Mondays and then October 27th and 23rd would be the, the fourth Monday, if I'm, if my brain's working right.
Right.
Okay, and they're all 5:30?
5:30.
All right. We have a.
Sound moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Thank you, that concludes my report.
All right. Moves to the other section, does anyone have?
I'm sorry, I have a question. You say your severe weather committee is being formulated or going to meet?
Yes, we're going to meet.
Okay, you're going to meet at like 5 o'clock in the morning or something to prepare like for a real.
Would you like to be there?
I can be, I can be there.
Good.
Okay, we'll extend your invitation.
Make sure you get a courtesy call to wake up.
Yeah, I had four.
Okay, does anyone have anything else in our other portion? If not, we move to the adjournment, we're looking for a motion.
Sound moved.
Everybody said it at once.
I can hear it.
Moved in second, all right. We will call this meeting adjourned.